Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to Order for Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Gunther?
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Ammaral.
Here.
John News.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone. Just as a reminder, per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at youtube.com/DHTSTVmedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 and 18 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures, and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. Once again, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting. Since this was a really an emergency session of the Dartmouth School Committee, there is no public comment taking place tonight. And the sole agenda item on tonight's agenda is a COVID-19 update. At this time, I'd also like to take a moment to welcome Dartmouth's Director of Public Health, Chris Meashad. Thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate you taking the time out of your day to be with us. At this time, I would like to just turn the meeting over to Dr. Gifford. We have asked, or I have asked, Dr. Gifford to brief the committee with up-to-date information on where we're at with COVID-19 and some of the numbers that are going on in the district and as well as the town. So I'd like to start with you, Dr. Gifford.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And also, I know Ms. Meashad will be speaking and updating the committee on some of the goings-on in the town, et cetera, and some of the processes and protocols that are in place regarding COVID and how we collaborate together. And I'll just acknowledge him as, before I get started, on his great collaboration, his entire department that has been completely supportive of the Dartmouth School District as we maneuver through this challenging time. So, just a quick update, we are still holding fast with our staffing issues, if you will. I asked the principals for the latest staffing update this week regarding number of staff that might be quarantined for various reasons, whether they've been in contact with folks at home or had close contacts in the school, et cetera. And I'm happy to report, if you will, that we have a really good week going right now, where they're able to support the students, to support the classrooms. So we haven't had, unlike some of my colleagues in neighboring districts, some of the major staffing issues thus far. So if you recall, we continue to update the COVID dashboard on our website every week about Friday or so. And last Friday, we had 63 students that, since the beginning, that we've been keeping track, had been tested positive in the district, and nine staff members. I think, if I have all the information as of today, because this was not updated yet, as I said, it's on Fridays, we've had, as of 12:12, another high school staff member, and 12:13, a Potter student, and a DMS staff member, and then on 12:15, a DMS student. But once again, one of the things we've been thankful for is that the last week or so, we have not had a lot of close contacts to deal with with those people, because they've either had a family member that was already ill, so stayed home, which was good, because we keep advising people, if there's anybody in the families that are ill, to stay home, or they had symptoms themselves and stayed home prior, et cetera. So luckily for us, we've had little or few close contact issues to deal with. So that's kind of where we are right now with cases in the school district. And I would certainly like to, you know, I've talked to Ms. Meashad about the issue of clustering and in-school transmission, et cetera, what's going on in the town, and I know he'll be able to update us to that. Mr. Oliver, you also asked me to update the committee on the possibility of remote or a snow day, if you will, on Thursday. We know the snow is coming. So yeah, we did send out an email to the staff today. I met with the elementary principals as well, and the principals have recent updated information to their staff to be prepared for whatever might be. We've sent an email to the parents as well, but the basic message is that we'll be monitoring tomorrow. Our intent will be to have a remote learning day. We've given directions and instruction on what that will mean. Cohorts that were meant to be in school on Thursday would log in to the Google Classroom as normal, participate in a scheduled in-school, like they would in school. The students that were meant to be remote would engage in their assignments, et cetera, or, as in the middle school, they log in for scheduled meetings. At the elementary, they might log in for morning meeting and closing circle, et cetera. The high school, as we know, has been full logging into the Google Classroom already. We have, we are putting our emails that people need to be alert to any other announcements that might come, because as we monitor the situation tomorrow, if it becomes apparent that it's going to be a larger storm, then, you know, again, we're New England, who knows, rain, snow, who knows? But if there's a potential, which there always is, for large outages throughout town, we might make the announcement even Thursday morning that it's actually a traditional snow day. So it is flexible and fluid. It's unfortunate, but it has to be that way, because we're trying to monitor the situation and make the best call possible. So with that said, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford, and thank you for bringing us up to date on that information. Before I turn it over and like to, and hearing from Mr. Meashad, just two things really quickly, one being, where are we at? I know that the, we had heard a couple of weeks back that there was a block of Grade 8 students that was quarantining. Are they still out, or are they back in session at this point?
I'm trying to remember the dates already, but let me think a minute. I really don't have that date in my mind, to tell you the honest truth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to relook at some of my information. I don't really have that date, because dates are just flying through my mind. Yes, it is.
It seems like the days are just flying by right now. But yeah, I was just curious. That was just one of my personal questions.
Right, right, right.
And before I turn it over to Mr. Meashad, I do know that, you know, a lot of municipalities, a lot of towns and cities are still experiencing what they're calling, from what I'm hearing, the post-Thanksgiving surge, where numbers going up. And I know that there was a lot of, there has been a lot of testing going on. You hear about it. I know the Whale's Tooth Parking Lot down in New Bedford, I know they swapped, or they switched over to an appointment schedule because of the amount of testing they were doing. And I do know that testing's been taking a while, we've been taking a while to get back results. So I'm just curious as to how that affects the numbers in town as well as the numbers across the state. And I'm just curious if, you know, where we're at as a municipality for the town of Dartmouth. So I'd like to turn it over now to, and welcome Chris Meashad, Director of Public Health for the town of Dartmouth, to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm glad you mentioned testing. I'll get into the testing first. We heard last week that the Whale's Tooth, which is the Stop the Spread campaign by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, would be transitioning from, you know, drive-up to by appointment, and today was the first day. So early this morning, around 6:30-ish, I decided to test the system, and it said that I was able to get an appointment for Saturday at 2:20 PM. A short while later in the day, sometime around noon time, I went back onto the site and attempted to get another appointment. I'd have a login for a full disclaimer to get the appointment earlier in the day. When I went back in around noon time, the site said that no available appointments. Check back often. I checked back twice before the end of today at 4:30, and the message was still the same. So this is a concern, and testing is something that has circulated through the department discussions at the town of Dartmouth Health Department, because we know that there was a tremendous interest in testing leading up to Thanksgiving. We believe that that testing was to accompany people's intent to travel, even though the governor had advised not to travel. In the Governor Baker's press conference today, he noted how there was a nearly 95% doubling, or nearly doubling, or 95% increase in the number of daily cases that Massachusetts experienced between 12-1 and 12-8. We were averaging around 2,400 cases per day back on December 1st. On December 8th, the state of Massachusetts was averaging 4,800 cases per day. This was attributed to the post-Thanksgiving surge that we were warned about, and I now know that we are seeing the results of. You know, staying on the subject matter of testing, I believe that we're going to continue to see an interest in testing leading up to Christmas. However, with the Whale's Tooth parking lot, testing site now going to buy appointment, that's going to certainly curtail the public's ability to test. And that it's going to frustrate the matter further, because, you know, some people that were seeking testing and later learning that they were positive because they're asymptomatic, may not have that opportunity. We're being told that they're going to only schedule a small number of tests until they can get things transitioned, and then they'll be back up to full numbers. But again, that's hearsay. And, you know, all I can speak to at this time is that people don't have the access that they once did. We also know that weather is going to start to play an influence in testing. So you're talking about how, you know, the district is looking at Thursday with its operations. This snow event that's coming in on Thursday, I believe, will impact testing similarly. People are not going to want to drive, and that's going to drive down participation at these testing sites. It's troubling, because it's going to, you know, prevent some people from seeking testing that need testing. They might be concerned, because they're a close contact, or, in some cases, they are experiencing very mild symptoms. This is something we've heard a lot about from people in our conversations, that, you know, they just had a runny nose, and they learned that they were a close contact, so they sought out testing. You know, it is apparent that in our younger community population, that, you know, many of them experience mild symptoms. This is a concern, because I worry that this is dismissive of the seriousness of the disease with the population enlarged, as they frustrate from the inability to experience conventional Thanksgivings and Christmases, as well as, you know, interruptions to the last nine months of their life, with, you know, not being able to vacation and so on. And we forget about the real aspect of COVID-19, which unfortunately, I have not seen any good media campaigns on. You know, with the State Without Stigma campaign, and a lot of the awareness about opiates, we were great as a, as government to unveil how substance abuse, you know, hides behind every door, and to break down those stigmas, so that we realize that it could happen to anyone. While COVID can have consequences to anyone because of unknown conditions that lead them to be high-risk, we know that it's our elderly and those with dual morbidity that have the highest risk. And we're not hearing those horror stories by, as the public. HIPAA, unfortunately, will hurt more than it helps in situations like this. The public is shielded from the knowledge that we have at the Health Department, those one-on-one conversations that we're having with people that are fearful, because they gave COVID, or it's to a household member, and that household member is hospitalized. We know that hospital beds are filling to capacity. In certain parts of the state, they're full to capacity, as I saw on an information sheet last week. We also know that, you know, in the South Coast, our hospital beds are as full as they were, and in some days even fuller than they were back in the spring surge. So unfortunately, the public is not getting an opportunity to really see the real side of COVID. Those that we really need to be protecting, it's, you know, the young, to stop them from being dismissive, to see the horrors that are occurring in our hospitals and within those families that are impacted by COVID. So I worry now with the decreasing testing ability that seems to be descending on us with the by appointment, with the weather influencing access, and in essence, probably a lower case count. You know, this is forecasting, so I can't speak with certainty, but it certainly seems like everything is aligning to come into place. So it concerns me that this is going to be reason to relax. When we look at our case count in Dartmouth, we've experienced numbers that are much higher than they were the spring surge when the state was shut down. When we saw our highest numbers in late May of 78 cases, we know that about half of those cases were in congregate living facilities. Since October, we were fairly low, still below the May 8th, or, excuse me, the May 1st number, but November, the first week, we hit 61 cases. Since then, it's been double, it's been triple digits of 115, 133, 129, then December, 156, and 177 on Saturday. I'm beginning to be a little bit concerned about the numbers this week are going to show a sharp decline. I really, I hope I'm wrong, because I don't think that those numbers are going to be representative of transmission in Dartmouth. Last week, I saw that a new file, businesses are required to call us at the Health Department when they have a COVID-positive employee. The number of calls coming in over the last seven to nine business, seven to nine business days has been unprecedented. We have not seen these numbers, and I know that this is a barometer of what is truly going on out in the community. We know that there had been delays in reporting, and that those delays frustrate public health measures. Those delays can provide opportunity for further transmission. And what I point to is, is that last week, unfortunately, we set a disappointing record. I saw results come in that were over 10 days old, somewhere in the approximate of about 12 days. At that point, if that was a younger person, they may have already been able to remove from isolation, but we've lost the opportunity to learn who their close contacts are, and those close contacts, as well as those household members that are most likely to be infected, are now infecting another generation that could have been prevented. We're still seeing those delays. Yesterday, I saw delays that were in the, I believe, around the six-day range, in worst case. Still much too long. When we require people's memory of eight days ago, because a lot of cases were looking back 48 hours, you know, people just don't have that memory of eight days ago. I get it. I have a hard time remembering the dates. It's still February 2020 for me. Everything is blending together. So it's, I don't have a lot of faith in what we're going to see for weekly case counts now through, I think, even early January, because the holidays are going to come in. We've got dual holidays, which are going to come in and impact the ability of some of the providers to report, and that's going to cause data to delay and then to batch. So what will happen is, is, you know, you may see spikes. If you look at the state daily data, you can see these spikes that occur. I forget what day it is. It might be, it might be a Monday. It reoccurs each week. I'm just looking at my calendar real quick, so I can, it's a Monday, where the numbers sharply drop, and then they return back up to normal. This is just one day in the week that you see a trend over more recently. But we know that batching has been a problem as a result of surges of increase in testing, and then as well as, more recently, holidays. So these are all going to affect the ability of us to control transmission or reduce the risk of transmission in the community. And unfortunately, I think what's going on in the community will carry into businesses and public operations, whether it be a town or a city hall or a school. What I would like to say is, is that I believe that schools are, our schools are our safest place right now. You've done an amazing job. You know, when we do see activity with the Dartmouth Public School community, that activity, that that disease is coming into the schools, and it's not as a result of cluster outbreaks. We know that that is coming into the schools, because it's in that younger families component of the population, where you have, you know, several adults in the household, siblings over multiple generations, in some cases, siblings over multiple districts. It might be elementary, it might be UMass Dartmouth, BCC, so on. So that's just the opportunity that this disease needs to continue, you know, transmission at the rate that it is, unless we all start to take some significant efforts to reduce it. I'm not seeing that, unfortunately, at this time in the public. And, you know, with the restrictions that were put in place last week, what I can say is, is that it takes many, many weeks for government restrictions to realize a decline in transmission or cases each week. We saw our lowest case count in Dartmouth as we were well advancing through the reopening in Massachusetts. Our lowest case count was in July and August with single digits. Well, we know in July that we were fairly well reopened with indoor dining. And we know that in April and even early May, when we were six, seven, eight weeks into full closure, we were still seeing our highest case count. So that just examples how long it can take to really slow this down and send it in the opposite direction. One thing that, so I think I've kind of touched on the three major topics that the chair was asking about with testing, how delays affect cases and transmission, and, you know, what I'm expecting for Dartmouth. I think that, you know, what I've noted earlier and throughout my discussion here is that I have the expectation that, you know, we'll, we'll continue to see high case counts in the triple, in the triple digits for the remainder of the month. We may see a decline this week and next week because of the holidays, but I don't necessarily trust that that is going to be indicative of what's really going on out in the community. Again, I hope I'm wrong. Time will tell. We also, you know, I also base that on the amount of close contacts associated with each case. So, you know, back in the spring, when everything was shut down, the potential of the disease to jump to many people was reduced, because the close contacts were limited. We weren't going anywhere. Schools were remote. Retail businesses were largely shut down unless it was essential. Everything is fully open now, and it's, it's getting into the businesses, it's running through businesses. And once it gets into that right household, it runs through the household. So unfortunately, I don't have good news on where I believe we're going for the next few weeks, and I think January's going to be tough as well. One thing I do want to note, that's going to be tough for our school systems, whether it's Bishop Stang, Dartmouth High School, any of our schools, is that next week, we're going to be breaking for a lot of our schools. That may be a break academically for the winter break, but those professionals within those schools, public or private, are going to be still having to field phone calls from my office. So apologies for having to disrupt you during your winter break, your Christmas time, when you may enjoy a short reprieve in the year. You know, we're going to be calling, saying, you know, it's Christmas Eve, and we just got notice that, you know, we've got a case, and this case is in your community, and we're going to identify, you know, possibly close contacts. That's going to continue through the week. Certainly, it may reduce as we look to that 48-hour window back from symptoms or testing. But we also have to remember that there's going to be transmission in households through the break, and that people within your community, the Dartmouth Public School System community, are going to test positive or become close contacts, and that we'll have to manage them as the school intends to reopen after the first of the year. So this is going to be, unfortunately, a new workload through the winter break for the administration and the clinical professionals in the Dartmouth Public School System and private schools alike. So I want to apologize for that now. I don't know where, you know, we look at when the December 1st, December 8th hit with our Dartmouth Public Schools, I mean, sorry about it. We look at the December 1st to December 8th rise in cases statewide for the 94%, 95%. And we think about how we've got Christmas on the 25th, and we've got the 1st, and then a couple of days later, the school's going back. So if we even see anywhere near a 50% trend, it's going to be very, very active in early January, unfortunately, with phone calls between my department and all of our school systems. So again, apologies again. Why I want to mention that is that this is going to be, it has been extraordinarily stressful run for your staff. They've done an amazing job. Unfortunately, I've had to call your administration at all hours, on all days, holidays, weekends, and I always cringe when I do it. It's, I try to alternate between people, because I know how disruptive it is and how stressed they are. This is a tough time. It's something that, you know, none of us are used to. I know that, you know, none of us signed up to undergo this intense workload, but we're all doing it. And, you know, my highest accolades for all of the staff at the Dartmouth Public Schools, administration on all levels, from the principals to their assistants within the schools, administration of Bush Street, the nurses, the nurses are on the front lines of this. They're having to deal with the students, the parents, the staff. They're, they're all under extraordinary stress. So I worry about them all as we face this break, which is not, unfortunately, I'm not foreseeing as a break for them. And then that they'll face, in my opinion, I think that, you know, irrespective of whatever, it's a public or private school, as their families expect them to take some downtime and hopefully spend some time with them, that they'll be facing this considerable stress as well. I have to mention all this, because mental well-being is a public health concern, and, you know, I've seen it within the public, I've seen it within public businesses as well, and it's, it's real, it's devastating. It's important for us to recognize that, and I wish I had a magic answer for you or some sort of silver bullet, except I don't. We're in it, you know, through the thick of it, and it's tough. So that's all I have. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm pretty sure.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Meashad, for being here this evening and for some of the facts that you've put out. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, just a couple of things that I, that's, I just want to bounce off while they're fresh in my head, is that I think you hit the nail right on the head when you said, you know, unfortunately, your administrators are, you know, the, foreseeably, they're going to get those calls on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day of having to contact trace people and contact trace students. And I think that's one of the reasons why we, as a committee, felt this was important to come together this evening to have this discussion around COVID-19 and about whether or not we should look to go do a remote schedule sooner rather than later. With that, is, do you foresee any possibility of Dartmouth participating in some kind of community testing? I know I saw a kiosk- Community testing. I know I saw a kiosk or a marquee today for the city of New Bedford and they're going to be offering COVID testing. For city residents at the airport this weekend, I believe. I know Fairhaven has been doing it as well as Akushinet has been offering. Community COVID testing. Do you foresee, because I know, like you said, that has been. You anticipate that being a concern and rightfully so that and good, good for you, I got to say for trying to. See if you can get an appointment at the Wales Tooth parking lot and look what happened. That they all filled up extremely quickly. So do you just, just out of curiosity and for everyone watching, do you foresee anything like that happening in Dartmouth?
I'm glad you mentioned that. I know that, you know, Fairhaven is doing testing. I know that Akushinet has been doing the testing longest. Testing comes at a considerable expense and there was a webinar yesterday, I believe some of the. Personnel at the Dartmouth Administration within Dartmouth Public Schools may have attended. Unfortunately, I was interrupted too much through it to get anything out of it. But what I've heard is that a lot of the communities that are undertaking some sort of testing. Program, they're funding it through CARES. CARES expires December thirtieth. I asked Akushinet, what do you plan to do when CARES runs out in, you know, two weeks or so? They're going to go seek local funding and then I think long term hope for FEMA reimbursements. Testing comes at an enormous expense. Samples can run, you know, all the way on up to about seventy dollars per sample. And when you start processing hundreds and thousands of samples, you quickly. I believe probably within hundreds of samples, you're going to run into procurement and you're going to have to undertake procurement procedures. And that's going to slow down that service as well. Or that offering. I know that the kiosk or I should say I believe because I haven't seen actually paperwork to accompany it. But I believe that that kiosk or that airport testing may have something to do with the stop the spread. I've heard about one of the stop the spread programs moving, so. You know, I know that Seven Hills is offering and. Also at the Greater Community Health Center in New Bedford as well. So there are some obstacles while it does seem easy to offer testing right up front. There are a number of things that you got to consider. First and foremost, front and center is going to be the dollar signs in a community as large as Dartmouth. If, you know, I look at just the, you know, gross numbers and, you know, multiply that by by the. An expected cost per sample. We're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially, not including personnel time and other expenses. And then when you start running that out across a surge and across still many, many more months. There's going to be a high demand for testing, I believe, because the vaccine, while it's rolling out, we, I think there's a headline in today's South Coast. About the first nurse receiving, I think was what I saw, receiving the first dose of COVID vaccine. We're going to be in the thick of this because phase two and phase three, the latter part of phase two. And then phase three is really where we're going to need to be. When we really start seeing more and more people vaccinated or the potential to vaccinate more and more people depending upon the buy in of the public's trust. So, you know, there is, you know, for a community like Dartmouth, I don't know what I would estimate for a budget. I wouldn't feel comfortable, but, you know. You could be looking at millions of dollars potentially. And with CARES running out. You know, where is that money to come from? I'm not going to speak on behalf of the finance director, but I know we don't have. That sort of resource of cash to tap into. Moreover. Knowing how long it took us to receive FEMA reimbursement from Superstorm Sandy and Irene, we waited. I don't want to say, I don't know, was it five or six years in one of those instances? So that can be a long time to tie up, you know, fiscal resources, especially as we're entering a probably a. A significant economic downturn for government agencies in the Commonwealth. And likely beyond. So that's the first part. Second part is is that, you know, we have to have, you have to have personnel assigned. So if you contract out, then that's going to bump up the cost per the service. You contract out, you know, do you want to make sure that this is exclusive to Dartmouth residents? It just keeps getting more and more convoluted. And then the other problem is, is if if you're going to put financial resources into this. Then you want to make sure that these financial resources are supporting something that are providing a benefit. In other words. If you're spending that sort of money, we better be getting results back in, you know, one to two days. To get results back at a six to seven days and spending possibly tens of thousands of dollars over over a weekend. Leading up to a holiday and those results will come back to seven days. Would be infuriating to me because that's money that was wasted on stale data when it came back. That doesn't provide us with the public health tools. To try to prevent the next generation of the disease. So we are continuing to monitor. I've talked to one healthcare provider today to find out, you know. How available is testing within your provider group? I've got to call into another. We know that there's still access to CVS and again, it goes back to the Wales Tooth Parking that, you know, it's been purported that. You know, they're going, once they get through this new system of buy appointments, they'll be back up, you know, to conducting significant tests per day. And possibly without the wait in that long line. So I think it's a situation that we really have to watch and monitor right now. And as we know that there's a lot of talk about, you know, Governor Baker dispersing some test kits to some of the schools in the Commonwealth. You know, seems like some of those, it seems like those would be an earmark for more densely populated communities. But we're certainly, you know, as we've seen throughout this pandemic since the onset, everything is fluid.
Thank you, Mr. Mishad.
And what I've noted is is that my new statement is at this time. So. Everything I'm saying is at this time.
Fair enough. Dr. Jenkins.
Thanks for all this, Mr. Mishad. You know, I want to make one point and then also ask you a couple of questions. One, you know, it's great that I think I'm on our campus emergency response team. And from what I understand, South Coast has signed a partnership with the Broad Institute, which should speed their testing results, which is great. Except we took my son to South Coast Health and we got a bill after we did a COVID test, which for many families. Right, we're in an economic crisis, right? It's just not tenable, right? So there's some frustration here that the free testing site run by the state is not able to put through more. People because that's really what we need. My questions for you are related to the campus testing. Project, which has gone pretty well. It's been asymptomatic testing. So it's two pulled. One, what impact will the fact that campus is closing testing essentially for a month have? On the one hand, I think our, it may add to that case drop. We aren't, we don't have a ton of case out of campus, but because we're not testing, we're not identifying cases. And that I think will also put pressure on testing. I know there are students, faculty, staff who were going there for testing. Who no longer can go there. So what impact will that have on the town? And then second. We've had a pretty well oiled machine on campus. I get tested there regularly once a week. I am in and out of the door in five minutes. There is, I think, one time I waited for one person in front of me. Has has, is there any capacity for us to pursue a partnership? With the university related to testing for town residents? We are going to be contracting out, which is a cost for our campus. So I don't know if there's any potential for us to cost share. And there has always seemed to have been appointments when I go look for appointments to do my testing. So what impact will the stop have and is there any potential for partnership there?
So the decline in testing that we're going to experience at the university or expected to experience at the university as the semester ends. Is going to most certainly increase our percent positivity in Dartmouth because we're going to lose, you know, a projected. I think there's what about six to seven hundred students that are residents on campus? And those students that have to be on campus for in-person learning such as labs were being tested.
Yeah, our positivity rate was one point nine percent, which I think was bringing down town numbers, yes.
Right, but it's also going to remove, you know, probably a, you know, a fair number of tests. Over that fourteen day reporting period that the state uses each week. So, you know, I believe that will. It's going to drive down the number of tests and, you know, also increase our percent positivity. But time will tell. You know, because masked within the total number of tests conducted in the last fourteen days. Is other surveillance programs outside of the university. We know that there are surveillance programs in a lot of congregate living facilities. That are, you know, getting quite aggressive with their testing. To try to, you know, either keep it out or to try to head off a outbreak. As far as partnering with the university on their program, you know, I haven't heard of any capacity. We certainly can't talk to the university about that. I'm not, you know, again, it goes back to, you know. First and foremost, the resources, while it does provide a great opportunity in terms of the location. Especially with the the really low activity at the university. But, you know, we have heard some discussions that the university may be. They they started out slow, which is something I've always said, you know, is it's better to do to start out a little bit slower with all of this and let out slack. Than it is to undo damage. So, you know, I've I've heard all sorts of things. I haven't heard anything final. Certainly if the on-campus resident population doubles, you know, that may impact their ability to. You know, collaborate with the town. But, you know, I can certainly reach out and ask, but the big thing is going to be. I I think the finances first front.
Thank you, Mr. Mishad. Anything else, Dr. Jenkins? Anyone else?
Okay, not for Mr. Mishad, but I have I have other thoughts after he's, we're done.
I'm good, Chris, with, I'm good with Mr. Mishell.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
I I think I think I'm good. I'm kind of processing it. I just, I I apologize. My son just popped in. Yeah, I just really appreciate your your thorough sort of explanation and detail into all of this. I wasn't, I wasn't. Yeah, I wasn't sure what to expect and I'd done some research and I just think that you were very thorough and I appreciate your. Appreciate that. So I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you for for your time. Coming here, you know, to our meeting and also all that you're. All the time you're putting in for the the safety and wellness of of public health of our community. So I'm just always grateful for for you. So that's all I have, Chris, at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Emerald. Mrs. Wade?
Yeah, yeah, I think I'm also, you know, processing and I want to echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you so much for, you know, coming in and I really appreciate, you know, expounding upon the the stress that our admin. You know, across each of our schools are experiencing and and talking about mental health because that's such a key key point of all this, you know, as well as just, you know. The amount of the huge amount of work and the added stress, you know, and then, you know, we see it ends, but it's certainly not, you know, the vaccine, but it's certainly not. You know, happening in the next couple of weeks. So we have to, you know, kind of heed that and and make adjustments. So I appreciate everything that you filled us in on. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I will echo my colleagues, Chris. Thank you. I actually learned a lot from your presentation this evening. A lot about the state of where we're at with public health in the town of Dartmouth is just as well as just looking to the future. And what the immediate future in the next couple of weeks holds for us, which is a lot of uncertainty. So you're you're more than welcome to stick around, but I understand that, you know, you probably get very little time to yourself these days. So I feel free to, you know, drop off the meeting, but I did want to take this opportunity on behalf of the. The school committee to really thank you and also just for, not only for tonight, but for everything that you're doing for this town and for, you know, keeping the. Our town members and our students and faculty safe.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And, you know, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the good words from everyone and from yourself. And I just do want to note that, you know, unfortunately, I'm the figurehead for it or the the person in front of the others. The computer camera, but it's not possible without, you know, all of the contributions. Of everyone. The nurses at the health department, you know, more interacts with, you know, so many of the. Nurses at the school system, the administration within the school systems. All the nurses behind more that, you know, nobody even gets to hear about, but the wonderful things they're doing. All the things that are happening within our town, within our fire district chiefs helping out on this. EMS, DCTV, Kyle Costa with the police department, you know, the support staff at the health department. You know, Melissa Madiris, the Personnel Director, all of the school nurses throughout all of the public and private schools in Dartmouth. And UMass Dartmouth doing an extraordinary job bringing their students back, which is part of our community. And I'm sure I'm leaving out someone and, you know, as well as all the administration here tonight. And I know I mentioned the school nurses, but again, the the school nurses at Dartmouth Public Schools. So thank you for that, but on behalf of all them, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, sir.
Take care and happy holidays.
Thank you. You too.
So with Mr. Mishad's presentation with Dr. Gifford's information that she presented this evening. I'd like to turn it over to any of my fellow committee members for their thoughts. I know one of the, one of the pieces. That we are, we're talking about or that has been brought up with some concerns about whether or not we should. Switch to a remote learning model sooner rather than later. As well as thoughts on, you know, after January first about. Starting the year remotely with a staggered start. I know that's something that the New Bedford Public Schools recently voted on and approved yesterday. So, but we're Dartmouth and I'd love to hear from what any of you have to say and your thoughts on all of this. Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think at this point in time, we should just steer the course that we have, okay? You know, I think you heard Mr. Mishell say that, you know, those things coming into, it's not coming into the school. Per se, because, you know, of students, it's just, you know, what's going on out there. So I don't think, you know, our schools are not a spreader, as I heard from him. I think we steer the course at this point in time. If something happens and we have to shut down later, then we do that. And again, as happened in March, you know, the governor took it out of our hands and so be it. But I think at this point in time, we wait and see what happens. You know, if we end, you know, if there's a surge when we come back in January and we have to shut down for a week. In January because of the holiday surge, then we do it then. But at this point in time, I think we keep our students in in school. The more that, you know, the more that they can be, you know, in school, face to face, you know, the better off they are, the better off the teachers are. You know, everybody's learning, everybody's teaching. So that that's my two cents on the matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nunes. Dr. Jenkins?
Oh, I am, I, you know, as with last time, I don't, I don't know what to do here, you know. I know the huge costs that are on both sides of this equation. I am deeply concerned about kids being home, particularly younger kids. But I'm also deeply concerned about the rate of community spread. I know that a lot of people, I've heard from a lot of people. I know we're in this boat. We signed up for hybrid learning when the rate of community spread was maybe about five cases, ten cases a week. One thing to send your kids to school, to send your partner to school. When there's five cases a week in a town of thirty five thousand people, it's another thing to send, right? Your kids who may have medical issues, your staff to school when we're seeing community spread like we do. Personally, I am not particularly inclined to go remote before the the winter break. I think we only have a few days left of in-person because I believe we have professional development on the twenty second. Because I believe we have professional development on the 22nd. So that leaves us with Wednesday, maybe a snow day, a fully remote day on Thursday, Friday and Monday, right? But I am also inclined to tell everyone in this community. That they should leave for winter break prepared that they may not be coming back in January. Because if the rate of community spread does not decrease. I don't think I can in good conscience continue to send people and kids to school. And I expect, we saw a surge at Thanksgiving. You know, the coronavirus is now rampaging through our community and people are going to get together again for Christmas. Right? And so it's going to be throwing fuel on a fire. So I strongly suspect, this is my hunch. That we're going to see some more rollbacks post-Christmas in the state. As has happened in other states, our hospitals are at capacity. And as much as we don't want to do anything, right? We can't continue to send sick people to hospitals that have no space. So I'm inclined, my inclination personally right now is to continue. Where we are right now, but to have everyone plan for being fully remote after the January break.
And with that, when, when do you think a decision would be made to let families know, Dr. Jenkins, regarding the, the winter break?
I don't know, right? I, I do, I do want to see some more numbers. Which is why I don't, I don't know. I could be convinced differently. I don't know how I would vote this evening. But if I don't see numbers, you know, serious indicators getting better in this community in this state. I, I would, I would, I'd be willing, I mean, everyone's going to have to work over Christmas bait doing contact tracing and. I mean, I'm not going anywhere over, over winter break. I'm staying home with my family. I'm going to do the right thing. So. If we have to have an emergency Zoom meeting, we do, and that's when we call it. I'm fine with that, but. I, I'm just not, I, I don't think that we're going to be able to come back in January.
Thank you. Mrs. Wade?
Yeah, so I've been struggling with this, you know, I, I think ever since the last meeting we had, it's been, you know, it's been tough. And my initial inclination was to say. You know, Friday, you know, Monday, why would we bring them in for that one day? But now, you know, in, in retrospect. You know, I think of the elementary students who really do need that. I mean, everyone, I think having closure, again, it's. I, doesn't seem like it's going to get worse right before Christmas. And I, you know, I don't want to pull the sheet underneath, you know, the rug out from under our. Teachers who've planned out the remainder of this semester, if we can, you know, or this timeframe before the holidays, if we can avoid it. And I want our. Students to be able to go in and, you know, give their presents to their teachers and, you know, have that finished. Like, I think that's really important because mental health is so important. With that said. Part of the advantage would have been to allowing students to stay home. And this is where I struggle on that Friday and Monday. And I say, just so we can balance the cohorts and, you know, they'd be out if Thursday's a snow day. Is that we would ease the contact tracing pressure for people right up against the holidays. So I'm acknowledging that. So it is a tough thing, but. I can say that, you know, especially after listening to Mr. Mishaw, I, I think we, we have to be prepared, you know, for that full remote after, even if, you know, even if it's two weeks. And I, I think we're going to have, we're going to have to have a meeting, you know, through that in sometime during our break. If we don't decide next Monday when we have a scheduling, a scheduled meeting, but I'd like to see that we give staff. Time, you know, I, I don't want to be saying, you know, on a, you know, on a Monday that, you know, you're going to start on a Wednesday or, you know, remote. I, I just, I would like to see our staff. Have advanced notice and again, anything we can do to avoid stress for our families. Let them be prepared and for our staff is just critical. That's all I, so, but it's, it's tough. It's tough.
Thank you, Mrs. Wade. Mrs. Emerald?
Yeah, I, I, I'm really not going to say much. Different to what my colleagues have said. I was on a call earlier today. While I was listening to the Board of Ed, you know, and they were talking about some, some changes they voted on, on some other stuff related to time and learning. But there was a lot of discussion from some of my colleagues in the field around just. What Shannon mentioned, just the mental health of, of our students and how. You know, we haven't, you know, we had Ross on and he certainly looked a little bit. Through the wringer, you know, ta, 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 sharing up with us his school improvement plan and he. He mentioned that, you know, that we complimented them and, and all of that and rightfully so. All the work that everyone's putting in, but he noted, and I'm sure all of our principals can note that the. You know, stu, the students' needs are, are ever-present, you know, I've. Over the course of the last several, you know, months since the beginning of this, unfortunately, the. Child protective agencies have, have, you know, the, the calls in about, about abuse and, and neglect are significantly down. And that is, is, is just really scary. That and top of what they described today on the call is. The, the tsunami effect of, of what we're, you know, we haven't even seen, you know, we, we're hearing it from Ross. We know it happened. Kids are coming in every day. We see it within our own families. But isolation and loneliness is just doing a toll on everyone in our community. And it was described as a tsunami, like with the way that the nature of PTSD, the trauma that we're all experiencing. Is going to come out eventually and it hasn't happened yet to the level that we're going to see it. I have my own son who has significant special education needs and I have seen him. When he was home. You know, I, I don't want to say regress, but just frustrated and just so confused and so unable to access. Any supports and services and, and he has a supportive family. I was lucky enough to be able to work from home. We were lucky to have lawn mowers that work in the backyard to occupy his time a lot of the time and, and just, you know, but. I, I feel like I don't know what I would vote on either. I mean, I would, couldn't say that I would support closing the schools. Currently because on the other hand, I pray every day that I can send my son to school. So I don't think I could have approached it and voted a certain way. I'm concerned about the numbers. I'm concerned about our students. I'm concerned that we, we need to have a plan. And so I say all of that. Sort of in line with my colleagues in that I'm. I'm, I'm inclined to be agreeable. Dependent upon whether or not our numbers go up. Or if they don't go down. To be agreeable to starting the year. Remote, you know, and sort of that quarantine after our. I'm scared, concerned. I'm just concerned about our teachers. I'm concerned about our students. So anyway, I just throw that all out there, blah. Yeah, I, I would be inclined to have that discussion and, and make sure that people have. Adequate time to prepare to go back to remote if, if we did vote on that. But I don't know right now that I would sit here and, and support a vote to vote now on that. I would, I would want to wait to see a little bit. To see about our numbers because I, to John's point, to Shannon's point, you know. We're. I, as much learning as we can get in person. Is what I'm in support of as long as it sort of aligns with the, the safety of our community. I don't see it getting better, but at this point I would, I would like to sort of see what we say maybe Monday or. If we had to meet in between as well, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Emerald. To that point, you know, I think our numbers, let's face it, if I'm a realist, I don't see our numbers getting any better after Christmas or after the, or after the holiday season. I, I would like this committee to come back next Monday, prepared to take a vote on whether or not we should look to close school early, or not close school early, but. Keep school closed that first week that we would typically be returning. To do a full remote session. I'd like the committee to be prepared for next Monday to have that discussion. And whether or not we move forward with that because to tie, and I'll, I'll come back to you in a second, Dr. Jenkins, to. To push that vote off any longer, I don't think it's fair for families in town. Something else. With, I'm also torn, I'm torn right now with, because I can, I can honestly see. Some, the thought process behind. Looking to, you know, make Friday the last day of school for in-person learning and we gained three days. You know, as far as keeping the kids, keeping students home and then having that Monday and remote, but I can also understand the equity issue. So I'm struggling with that. Because I know gaining three days of, you know, remote learning and quarantining. Or, or staying away from each other in the schools because quite honestly, I firmly, I firmly believe there are asymptomatic students walking around the schools right now. As well as staff members. I, I can almost say that, you know, it's just my opinion. But without a doubt that there's asymptomatic students and staff walking around the schools. So gaining those, those three days, there, there may be something there, especially when you hear. Mr. Mishaw talk about contact tracing and social emotional wellbeing with students, faculty and staff and. I, I hear from, I hear from families, I hear from teachers and even students. That the, the concern and burden that, that goes on and plays out in their mind, especially with everything that's going on right now. I know this is taking a huge toll. On our students, our faculty and our staff. So right now. I, I'm honestly not sure. I, I guess I will, I'll go along if, if that's the committee's pleasure to keep the schools open through. Through Tuesday. But Dr. Jenkins?
So I just want to bring up a point that Ms. Wade made at our last meeting that I think we need to give families more advanced notice than pulling the plug right now. Because if we pull the plug right now, families are going to be scrambling for childcare. And I think that it is 100% going to lead to. Families sending their kids to other families' homes and the intermingling of school, of kids. I don't think, I think it's going to make the community spread worse if we pull the plug on schools right now than if we, if we, if we wait. If we say now on, I, I, I agree that on Monday, it would be great for us to make a decision on Monday.
I think we need to.
We, we roll into winter break and that gives families some time to plan for what they will do for that week. If we pull the plug right now, families are going to scramble and it's not going to help. I would also like to ask, I, I hesitate to ask this because I know how hard our administrators are working. But my concern is that our numbers, partially our population is the highest, but our numbers are highest at the high school. Right? In part because we cannot pod our high schoolers. Our high schoolers are also most able to handle fully remote. They are more autonomous learners. Than any of our other kids. And so I would like to hear, I don't want to put her on the spot tonight, but maybe on Monday night, perhaps hear Dr. Gifford's thoughts about. Doing some sort of staggered comeback after the break. Where we get our littlest learners in more quickly because I think that's the biggest burden on family. We're able to pod those students the easiest. And they are, you know, per medical research, le, least likely to, there's some debate about this, but maybe. Less likely to spread. So I don't know that I would support that. I just. I, I would like to hear and again, you know, give Dr. Gifford some time to think about that, whether that might be possible.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mrs. Wade?
Yeah, I have a question that's, you know, a little on a sidebar. As, you know, I've heard some feedback from families who have students in virtual, particularly the elementary school. And, you know, and I, I think we all received an email, you know, to that, to the question of students. Who are being added to that, you know, to the virtual school that's being offered, but, you know, by Dartmouth teachers. And I guess that's kind of gets to be a question. Are we going to cap that? Like, how do, because that, that becomes a little, you know, again, to. You know, Dr. Jenkins' point earlier is, you know, certainly we've seen when people first made those choices, the rates were a lot, you know, less, you know, concerning, you know, then certainly we're seeing that increase. So are we capping as those classes, especially, you know, again, tech is a different entity, you know, the, the high school's a different entity, but if we're looking at our elementary, are we capping those, Dr. Gifford? Are we, so we're keeping, and it, so is there a point where, because it, are those numbers continuously increasing? Like, or are they kind of staying with just a few kids coming in from quarantine?
No, they've been about steady. They've been, we haven't capped. We're not excluding anyone. Sometimes people ask for specific reasons such as significant health reasons or something like that. So. It's, it's helped kind of steady in and out, a few here and there, but not too bad.
Okay, well, that's, that's, you know, that's good to know that there isn't like a huge surge of parents are trying to, you know, which you might expect to trying to shift into that program. So I appreciate it. And then. You know, to what Dr. Jenkins, you know, had said, I, you know, again, I, I, the stagger start certainly does make, you know, to me, a lot of sense as well. If we can, can kind of consider as we look at the dates. You know, for January as part of our thinking next, you know, next week, Mr. Oliver, I think that would be, you know. Could be, again, part of our discussion. It's, I, I agree with her, you know, rationale there, bringing in our littlest learners and almost, you know, again, like replicating to some degree what we did in the fall. I think would be helpful.
Thank you, Mrs. Wade. Mr. Mishaw, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, sir. I would just like to add one more complexity to the weeks ahead and I promise I will be brief. So thank you for taking me after the conclusion of my discussion earlier. Winter sports have now started. You know, I know that there are some safety protocols, but that is certainly going to add a layer of complexity. To the delivery of, you know, your ultimate goal, which is education. You know, we did see with fall sports that there was a lot of contact tracing. So I fully expect that with basketball and hockey. We will see the same again and likely more because in the fall sports, we were still, you know, experiencing lower numbers. So the potential is much greater now. So I just wanted to add that because I did not note that earlier. Thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you real quick to Mr. Kylie, since he's been kind enough to, to, to sit through all of this. With the school closed, you know, for, you know, a week and a half type of deal, are we going to be quote unquote deep cleaning all the schools over Christmas vacation?
Well, we. So, Mr. Nunes, we have some scheduled activities that we'll be, we'll be undertaking over Christmas vacation, including changing filters for HVAC units. Where we wouldn't normally do that at this time of year. So we'll be doing that. We'll be doing a clean. That, that we normally would do during the holidays. There really isn't a necessity to do a deep cleaning. Beyond what we would normally do. We're, we're pretty much deep cleaning nightly, you know, where it would, where it's using those electrostatic sprayers every day in the classrooms and cleaning everything. So, I mean, we, we take every vacation week opportunity to sort of do a. More thorough cleaning to a school building than we would have a chance to on a nightly basis. So we'll continue to do that, plus some. You know, additional measures like, like the changing of filters.
Also, the, my second question, either to Dr. Gifford or again back to, to Mr. Kylie. If we just start changing some of these, some of these things around, have we got a, in. Kind of a basic yes or no, and I know we're an open session, but have we got some union issues that we're going to have to iron out?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I was going to say, it's not as easy as people think. There are many complexities to remote learning. There are people that do not work. There are people that may not receive paychecks. There are bus. Contracts that people are not working. This is much more complex than people think.
Yep, okay. Thank you. And I guess my last, my last concern becomes, becomes even if we go remote. And even over the, you know, the, the holiday break type of deal, you know, and, and more so with the high school. I mean, I think we heard from Mr. Tebow, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But his comment to us was that the high school students had really stepped up. And were doing the best that they could with the wearing of the masks and, and the social distancing, you know, come out, you got to go left, you can't go right, you got to go left. Even though maybe you're just going next, you know, taking the, you know, following all the. The, the ways, you know, the travel ways through the school type of deal. But my concern, a couple of my, my concerns becomes if these students aren't in school, you know, they could very well be hanging out with their friends that. You know, again, some of them maybe have come back from college. So, you know, you've got, you know, that type of, that type of a situation. And, you know, let's be honest, go by the high school on a Saturday or Sunday and you're seeing 50, 60 kids out there playing soccer, no masks, playing football, no masks, no social distancing, nobody's social distances. We got some, you know, they're not, for argumentative sake, nobody's following rules outside of school. So that becomes, you know, my big concern. And that's why I'm saying, you know, sit here and as much as we can, keep these students in school. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. So yeah, I appreciate everyone's time, everyone's efforts and comments here. Just a couple of takeaways from this is, you know, I, I was kind of torn going into this as far as closing early, but I'll go along unless someone has a motion. I will go along with keeping the, you know, keeping the schedule as is and moving forward through the regular holiday break. But as far as after the holiday break, let's plan on having that discussion next week. To, to Mr. Nunes' point, as far as things being, you know, a little more complicated than what they appear on the surface, I, I will say this to that, I will say that to me, safety is paramount. I could care less about union issues, about the other people, you know, getting involved with this. Safety is the number one priority when it comes to students in this district, including my own student. So as far as anything else goes, I'm looking at data, I'm looking at statistics and I'm going to do what I think is right and is in the best interest for students, not for anyone else other than students. Unless someone else has any other comments, we will, we'll see you all. Comments, questions, concerns for the committee, Ms. Emerald.
I, I just want to thank you for calling this meeting. I think it was really important. I think that there was great value. I learned so much from Chris Mishell and hearing from all of you. Like I said, I was, I've been struggling with this. On some level, I feel that inevitably we're going to vote and it is what it is. But I just want to thank you for calling this meeting because I think it was important that we, we had this discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Emerald.
I just want to mention another thing, according to Mr. Nunes' point, I still recommend that the, the structure, the schedule that the students are engaging in really supports that social emotional. I was on the Board of Education's meeting as well today and the social emotional issue is humongous. They are promoting, as we know, more and more in school as much as we can. And I think about the students that are in school every day now, our special needs students. If we went remote, what would happen with that? And the services that they're getting with the OT, the special speech, et cetera, has been extremely difficult in any remote situation. So just those things to think about as we move forward.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dr. Gifford. Chair willing to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Jinx, John.
A motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Nunes on the motion. Any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's right, roll call because we're remote.
Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Kathleen Emerald?
Yes.
Mary Waite?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night, everyone. We'll see you next week.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.